Record in the cloud. Okay, we are now recording, Madam President. We're ready to go.
I'm getting it. Okay. We will call this meeting of the Ohio High Point Joint Vocational School District to order. Roll call, please.
Brookhart.
Here.
Buck.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dunham.
Here.
Dyer.
Here.
Ludlow is absent. McConnell.
Here.
McMahon.
Here.
Mauser.
Here.
Purcell is absent. Reins.
Present.
Savage. Is Nairn not here either? I guess not. Staley.
Here.
Stanford.
Here.
Paige Wallace.
Here.
Where?
Online.
Zumburger.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. On number three, comments and communications and public participation. Dr. Smith, do we have any guests to introduce?
We have Nate from WPKO tonight, so glad to see Nate here. And you guys heard the administrative team introduce themselves earlier tonight, so I think we're good to go there.
Okay, so item 3B, presentations, the building update from Incompliance, Sam Lewis.
Sam Lewis, can you guys see the thing on the screen?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yep.
Great. All right. As I said, I'm Sam Lewis with Incompliance. The district's owners rep for the projects. As stated during the last board meeting, I'll be providing an update every month at the board meeting regarding the projects. The monthly report or the monthly update, Dr. Smith has been kind enough to share. You can go ahead and move to the second page, Dr. Smith, if you don't mind. I'll go ahead and talk through the executive summary there. So, right there is fine. So, Monarch has been on site for two months now. Construction operations have been increasing in number. They've been concentrating in area A and then area D, as you can see on the key plan. Area A is at the bottom of the key plan is hatched. That's where the addition is being constructed. Area D contains two mechanical rooms. We'll call them central plant one and central plant two. They've been concentrating in these areas because it's been dictated by the phasing plan. But also because it minimizes it minimizes interference with district operations. However, the district has been a pretty good team player and has opened up additional areas before they are required to be opened up. An example, this is the district opened up the corridors, allowed Monarch to get in there, remove ceilings in the corridors. So, Monarch can see where conduit piping, electrical lines were running. And the district has also opened up central plant area two, which is away from central plant area one divided by a hallway. But that was supposed to be opened up in May after the school was finished, after the school year was finished. But the districts opened that up early. This is good because, as you all know, this is a very fast-paced project. And hopefully, opening this up a little earlier will prevent any future construction delays down the road. So, I'm just going to go over some of the major highlights of construction that's happened this month. In area A, which again is the addition, Monarch has removed all the hardscape. So sidewalks, the drive that was in area A has excavated down and then basically built the grade back up with 304. So that 304 will help kind of stabilize the area during this rainy part of the year. They've also started installing some foundations in this area. And when I was on site last week, they had some CMU there. So CMU is on site and they may have actually already be installing that now. So, in area D, Monarch has reconfigured some of the CMU walls. So they've removed some walls, installed some new walls. They've been completed putting all the piping underneath the slab on grade in the central plant area one. And they've patched all the slab on grade in that area, which they're moving along quite well. When I was there last week, they were putting smoke seal along all the new CMU wall and preparing those walls to be painted. And in central plant area two, which is also in that area D, they've started some selective demolition of some electrical components in that area. Along with their work in area A and area D, Monarch has also performed some site work, primarily utilities. So they've installed sanitary sewer lines and some stormwater lines. And they've also installed conduit for fiber optic lines and telephone lines. I believe they pulled those. Have they switched over to those, Dr. Smith?
Yeah, the fiber's been pulled and we have switched over some of the fiber lines so far.
Great, great, great. So that's primarily what's happened this month. As far as construction administration goes, during the last OAC meeting, we spoke with both Freitag and Monarch. It seems like the submittal process, the flow of shop drawings and other submittals is going pretty smooth. Everybody's happy with the progress so far. It seems like all the long lead items have been purchased and are in the pipeline. Along with the submittal process, Monarch's also developing their baseline schedule, which is a cradle-to-grain schedule. It's not just three months, three-month chunks. It's for the whole project from beginning all the way to the very end. They've been making pretty good progress on that. And in fact, I believe April 8th, Freitag, the district and Monarch are going to sit down and kind of go over that and see if the district and Freitag give Monarch the thumbs up on that. That's pretty important for Monarch because they're aware of a contractual provision that kind of incentivizes them to make that baseline schedule as quickly as possible because they are not allowed to submit a pay application before that. I just wanted to go over that because as you can see in this budget spreadsheet, that would look pretty funny if you didn't know that that was there. In the hard costs, so moving on to the project budget, these tables are pretty much the same format as you go up just a little bit. Those are at the first two tables in the previous page. Perfect, thank you. So, these tables are pretty much in the same format as you saw last time. They've been updated with an expense ledger that Mr. Adelsberger provides, which is great. The only thing that you'll notice is that's a little bit different is we have a new column on the right with the remaining balance. So this is so that the board can see how money isn't being spent and see how everything's tracking. So, as I said, there's been no pay application submitted by Monarch. So the budgeted amount matches the remaining budget amount or remaining balance, excuse me. If there's money still left in a line item in our budget, it'll be green. If it's been paid out and there's no expenses suspected in that line item, it'll be black with a zero, as you can see there. And knock on wood, hopefully, we don't have any overages, but if that's the case, then those will be shown in red. So, hard costs, FFNE, there's FFNE outside of the general contract. Nothing's been spent on that yet, but I believe we'll be developing an RFP to put in front of the board probably this next board meeting. Is that right, Dr. Smith?
I don't know. We came out of the furniture meeting deciding that we didn't have to purchase something right away necessarily for this August. And so, the architects want a little more time on colors and they're bringing some samples in for us to review. So, it might be maybe more the May board meeting. We might take six weeks to kind of get to that part, just because of timing.
Okay.
What we learned on the furniture meeting last Friday.
Perfect. You can go ahead and move down to the next page if you will. Thank you. These are actually soft calls. Sorry about the incorrect title there. As you can see, soft calls are looking pretty good at this point. District has already paid out, obviously, marker for their pre-construction services. And I've already paid out the builder's risk insurance. So those are zero there and black bold. So, we're not expecting any more, any more costs associated with those. And then everything else, there's still remaining balance in that line item. So, they're green. Everything's tracking pretty well at this point. Okay, can you move down just a little bit, Dr. Smith? Yeah, so this table is the contingency tracking table. And it'll track any use of the contingency, which is likely will be, you know, change orders coming down the road. As we discussed in the last board meeting, there are some change orders in process. They haven't been finalized yet. I've been told that this is because Freitag has been working with Monarch and has been checking all their numbers for these change orders. It's kind of an iterative process, which is taking a little while. And I've been informed that the district should see the change orders to review sometime later this week or early next week. So that's where we all were at those. There are, from what I understand, four primary change orders. One with a crack that was found in the sanitary sewer line of central plant area one that was fixed. They just have to come back with pricing for that. Hydronic coils for temporary heating for next, this coming winter during the construction project. There are some electrical and HVAC items that were switched around in order to basically extend a warranty for a piece of equipment. And then the last change order was for board stock insulation, insulation for the addition. The insulation required a integral water barrier that wasn't specified. So they're working through that at this time. Anything you want to add there, Dr. Smith?
Yeah, and I will add that, just talked with Robert two days ago. And the board will be initiating a change order, or the owner will be initiating one. For our previous science rooms, we were going to leave some of the cabinetry and gas lines and things in there. But after talking to Mr. Lang and the department, they would rather have that be a bigger room and just have more space flexibility for students and learning. Since we're building new science rooms, we're not going to keep any of those. So we're going to have to have some removal of electric, gas lines, cabinetry, and add on the new furnishings for that area, teachers' desk and things that we did not have previously planned for those two rooms. So, that'll be something that'll be initiated by Robert. It'll be a future change order that we've put into place.
Great, great. Okay, can you move down just a little bit, Dr. Smith? The change order, we just discussed those. So, schedule look ahead. In area A, they're going to continue to excavate for foundations, place concrete for foundations. Either begin or continue CMU. And continue with some of the utilities in that area. In area D, the central plant area, they're going to construct walls for the cooling tower, place some overhead conduits, piping, and pull wire for fire alarms. And then they're still going to continue some of the selected demolition in central plant area two. So, board resolutions, none at this time, which is good. And then project photographs are the remainder of the report. They're kind of grouped in area A for several pictures or area A. Second, several pictures are area D. And the very last one, I believe, shows conduit and conduit placement. So, that's the brief update for this month. Does anybody have any questions?
Sam, is there any way you can get this document to Dr. Smith or Beth a couple of days before the board meeting so it could be added to our notes in our folder?
That was
That's already been discussed and that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, is that all we have there? I think.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Sam.
Good night.
Trying to get the agenda up for your present, Madam President. There we go.
Be at 3C.
We are at 3C. I think you guys heard most of my district update tonight. Sorry for the typo on the year that we're going to be finished, which is 2022 in August, not 2023. But I would say the year closeout is going well. We'll be bringing additional students, as I said in the report, I think, come after spring break, those that need additional help toward graduation. We will be setting up some different things like that. You also see some ideas of summer camps and things for the extended school year that is due as part of the kind of governor's extended plan. It's really what we currently already do. And there's really no place to submit the governor's current plan. You're just supposed to post it on your website. So, we're going to have to revamp what I have already typed out in that with Kelsey if we're going to do that. But, but once again, we do have a plan for identifying students, working with students to make sure they reach graduation, how to help juniors and sophomores coming in next year that might be credit deficient, coming to our building. Who want to be here as part of our program based on how the learning environment went this year with COVID and things of that nature. So, just so the board is aware, we have created stipends and different things to incentivize teachers to want to take that on. I mean, we are dealing, I think, a little bit with teacher burnout. I mean, it's been a rough year. But, and so we made the incentives a little bit more enticing this year to try to get people to take these projects on. So, we'll have more update on that as we talk to the staff and analyze number of students who need to be served here in the future months. That's all I have. That's all.
All right, thank you. We have two students of the month for March. One is Sadie Schellenberger from Smart Technology Engineering, two is from Ben Logan. So, please give our congratulations here, John. And then Robert Tyler Fawley from Smart Technology Engineering to Indian Lake High School. We congratulate both of the students. And then our staff member of the month for March is Kelsey Webb, our Director of Communications and Public Relations. Now, I was looking around earlier. She's not here, right?
She's online tonight.
Hi, hi, Kelsey. Congratulations.
Hi, thank you very much.
Okay. I just didn't want to miss her if she was here.
No, it's not her. She had another event tonight that she's trying to do both, so she was able to get online and help us here.
Super. So, item number four, committee reports and presentations, legislative report, Paul.
On March 17th, Senator Rob Portman spoke with the Senate for highlighting his bipartisan temp start our business by supporting the Student Act. Legislation he is introducing this week with the Senate, Tim King, helped continue supporting the economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic by improving skills training and addressing the shortage of skilled workers to fill the new jobs available today. On the week of March 8th, they got a Senate report card. They announced the conference introduction of House Bill 200, the bill with revised state report card, productivity accountability system, OSBA supports the press conference. The General Assembly sent House Bill, or sent Bill 22 to Governor Delain, which be established in Ohio Health Oversight and Advisory Committee by legislative oversight of all executive orders issued during emergency and before a vote by General Assembly. Senate Bill passed 19th ass by 25 to aid requires the High Department of Education and other state agencies to reduce regulatory restrictions by 30%. Will be sent to the House, I think, now. The committee held an informal hearing on House Bill 67, which the governor signed. And extends the use of final course grades and lower end of course exams through the 2023, 24 school year. Requires OD to seek federal waiver accountability, requires OSBA, the High and the FASA of elementary schools and ministries all support it. They held sponsored testimony for House Bill 170 sponsored by President Byrd and Tracy Richardson, which provides funding to schools and other entities to elementary, secondary school emergency relief fund. There is a cemetery on House Bill 110, which required operating appropriations for physical years, 22, 23, by any name. Senate Bill held the testimony on Senate Bill 111, which provides funding to schools and other entities to ESSER, Responsibility 19. Held third hearing on House Bill 123, which modifies community reinvestment areas and increasing school districts approval for exemptions from 50% to 75% eliminates requirements for revenue, sharing among other changes. They have just a lot of different hearings on a lot of bills. I think they have like 30 different hearings on bills. But nothing else has really come to a light.
So I'm going to add a couple of things to Paul, just so you know, that most of your school districts will see money from the ESSR2. That, if you remember last time, that money did not come to career centers. 90% of that money is directed through your title-type programs that you have. And so that's where the money goes. Now, afterwards, the governor evaluated some of the 10% money left over that he could give you to different places. And career centers did get a little on the back end later in CARES Act-type money. Eric, we got what, $180,000, I think it was, I think.
We did, but have to remember that our funding didn't get reduced last year or this year.
Right.
Because of Perkins funding that we received, so.
So, that's one thing.
ABSs weren't shortchanged.
No, we were not. We're not shortchanged at all. So, but just so you know, don't expect us to get the ESR money necessarily. And then the other thing to let you know, I don't know if you said anything about the FAFSA rule that's out there. Did you hear?
I read a little bit about that.
This is the scariest, this is a very scary rule that they want to try to put in. And this is the idea that every student must fill out a FAFSA form as a criteria for graduation. Okay? As a criteria to graduate, a FAFSA form must be filled out. Okay? We are pushing, you know, it is a hard line to walk because, once again, I'm all for encouraging kids to go to college, but I don't want to get into parents' private information of their salaries and all their money and stuff that you have to put on a FAFSA form with your social security number to walk each kid through. You know, I'm promoting things like, hey, if we need to hold a meeting each month to have parents come in and walk them through the FAFSA or help with training, I get that. But part of these CARES Act dollars with also the idea that colleges are down quite a bit across the state in their enrollment and things of that nature, is this is being pushed by other entities to make it part of a graduation requirement. And so if you hear that, or if your board future has to take a vote on such a thing type stuff, you know, I would just strongly recommend that you talk to your leadership and representatives and stuff that, you know, there's a way for us to support FAFSA with not making an additional thing on our counselors because they'd be the ones who'd almost have to sit down with each one of the students and try to fill it out. And then how do we collect all that information from parents when we already have problems getting forms in? You know, are we going to hold a kid's graduation up because of a FAFSA form? But that is what the conversation in the committee talk is about. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Absolutely. Has to be done by what, April or January?
January.
Yeah. So.
In the old days, I'll say that. My son's older. It seemed like it really had to be done in January before. We're ready to move on to item five, topics for discussion. In 5A, I would like to call for a modification to the agenda. And I think I did make Eric aware of it earlier today and then texted Dr. Smith. In item 9B, the trip to Belize, I would like to pull that out separate for discussion and vote. And so then I would need a motion and a second to move that out and vote on it separately.
Moved.
Thank you.
We also have two other modifications. You're going to take a vote. You're going to take a vote on that, sorry.
Yes, on that one.
Go ahead.
Roll call, please. It was Brookhart. Sorry.
Brookhart. Buck.
Yes.
Burrows.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dunham.
Yes.
Dyer.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
McMahon.
Yes.
Mauser.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Stanford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Zumberger.
Motion carries. And then you said that there's two more?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you know, we added two addendums to your agenda within the last 24 hours. That's not always normal, but we ended up with getting a late resignation letter after the things went out, as well as Urbana City, just maybe last night or something, voted on the idea of a tax abatement for someone down there. And we typically just follow whatever our partner school does. And so to keep that paperwork moving forward for the CEP in Champaign County and that, I went ahead and put that on the agenda. So, F and G are addendums added tonight.
Okay, thank you. 5B, BAC update.
So, as you know, we have multiple BACs in every county, I would say. Harden County is still trying to find itself a little bit. Logan County, the Logan County Collaborative is meeting with subcommittees that are really doing a lot of work and putting some very good action plans in place, you know, including things that Kelsey's working on, like signing week within the county and recognizing your E and working on just different problems with workforce and how we might solve some of those things, surveying students about what they're interested in. We have similar things going on with youth science and things in Union County, looking at getting some different data from them about student interest and job markets. And then Champaign County has also started kind of reworking their BAC. They also got a grant through the ESC as well to be working on online curriculum and ideas and manufacturing things that we are partnering with in a way, at least having our facilities available. If they want to do training and things of that nature, there are some certifications that are required by teachers that our teachers are already getting certifications in Photoman and Fanix and Motivan, sorry. And so, we're not necessarily asking them to go get these additional online certifications at this time. But, but all the BACs, at least in your general area, are trying to do something and partner with business and education to improve pathways for students. So, I just try to give you those kind of quarterly updates as they meet kind of every quarter. Any questions on that?
So for 5C, in the weekend notes, there was a discussion because of the situation that we'll be here. Did we want to do Zoom meetings during the summer or did we want to try to meet at Bell Fountain School District?
So, I need to expand a little bit on that. The law allows us right now to have current Zoom meetings through July of this year. Based on the COVID, there is some idea that legislation might be expanded to make that more of a permanent way to have board members that would possibly miss still be able to join. But as right now, it goes to July. We originally talked to Bell Fountain City Schools about using their facility, and they're willing to do that. But typically, they have some custodial issues and vacations and things in July that can make it a little bit more problematic. We will have no AC or air and power, could even be off at different times here in this building. And so, we've done Zoom over the last few times. Do we want to do Zoom in June and July? Try to meet in Bell Fountain City in August if we needed to or not. Maybe we'll be back here fully and be able to run because we'll be starting the school year. But at least for the June and July meeting, since it is still legal to be done by Zoom, is that something the board prefer or would they make sure that I could find a location to meet in person?
It would be fine. I mean, to invest in meeting in person, I mean, the circumstances, I think we should.
Don't need a formal vote, just need kind of a head shake, thumbs up. Everybody's in agreement.
I'm not hearing a lot of rattling, though. Is it okay to do that?
That is, yeah.
Okay, super. Okay. So, 5D, Dr. Smith, the facilities and grounds meeting, you wanted to hold that in April prior to the board meeting?
Correct. That's going to be at 6 o'clock. And that meeting typically, as most of you knows, around 30 minutes or so like that. And so I will ask the board members to please come early if you'd like to do a tour of the building. Bring your hard hats in April. And Mr. Walker's going to be here at the facilities ground probably around 6:40. They kind of take you through hopefully the mechanical rooms, some of the different site things and things that are They kind of take you through hopefully the mechanical room, some of the different site things and things that are going on, where we might be with the building at that time and things for your first kind of tour. But yeah, we will need you to have your hard hat. So if you could bring that, we will do that probably about six forty to seven o'clock. A little twenty minute short tour on where we're currently at, especially since we're probably not going to be here May, June, July with all the other things going on. It might be a while before we get back to kind of touring where we are in progress. So we would like to do that after the facilities and grounds. And we will let those who signed up for the committee be aware too of the agenda for that evening.
So our next Board of Education meeting will be April the twenty-eighth here at seven P M. Five F, the Policy Committee meeting will be held on May nineteenth at six P M.
That's correct.
And then the Board of Education work session will follow that at six thirty P M. For the new board members, we try to do maybe two work sessions a year, usually one in the spring and maybe one in October. So our treasurer will discuss a lot of our investments that we did with the selling of the bonds. Is that the proper term? Okay, you know, and then let let us know where we stand, I think, in our five-year forecast. So it's really informative. So I encourage you to come. So our May board meeting will be the twenty-sixth.
And so here's the so here's the question for that. One, just so you know, I encourage you to come to a work session. This year, we're going to have our administrative team each present something about the five-year forecast. I think after six years, you guys are tired of hearing me talk. And so we're going to let them share some of their public speaking abilities and they will be. So we'll try to mix it up a little bit for the nineteenth. The twenty-sixth, here is our issue. Typically, we have our board meeting followed right after convocation on that Wednesday. As you can see in the ones below, senior awards and convocation has been moved to the twenty-first. We don't have the hill here this year and to share the facility with Bell Fountain City and they're set up to do it outside. As you remember, typically you've held it in their gym. This year, we're trying to hold it outside for COVID reasons so that we can use both sides of the bleachers so that all parents and people can come and we don't have to say you only get two tickets. Okay, and we only do this many, you know, you have a thousand square foot gymnasium or a thousand seats, but you're only allowed to do twenty-five percent. Two hundred and fifty people can come. That's only one person per kid, you know, kind of thing. So so we made it outside and did a partnership with Bell Fountain City Schools to hold it there. And so that's one of the reasons why we're having it early at four thirty, because theirs is at seven. And we need to get kids out for the Riverside graduation that same night, and they have to be on the road by six. So ours typically goes an hour, so four thirty to five thirty, let them say hi to their friends and family, get in their car and drive to Riverside to get in line for their graduation down there at six thirty. So that is why we're holding it, trying to hope by giving early notification, people will be able to kind of modify work schedules and do that so we can get as many people to celebrate convocation with our students as possible. All that being said, going back to five H, do you want to then go and have your regular board meeting on the Wednesday? Do you want to try to move it to that Friday and we would have to get out of the traffic? Once again, we'll be leaving and Bell Fountain City parents will be coming in to get their seats in the bleachers. You know, so it will be a little bit hectic to try to come back over here and hold a board meeting or just wait till the Wednesday, the twenty-sixth and hold it at our normal time. It just would not follow convocation this year.
We have to get out of Bell Fountain, no matter where we're going to, whether it's here or home.
True.
And usually we meet in the library and that's where their board members, the guest speakers, and then there's a reception.
Yeah, we can't.
In the district learning. Well, unless they use the district learning center or we use the district learning center and traded them off.
When it first is a Friday.
It's a Friday night.
When's Memorial Day weekend?
It's the weekend after, I think.
Twenty-ninth and thirtieth?
I think.
I don't know. Does it stay online?
Twenty-ninth, thirtieth.
Twenty-ninth and thirtieth, okay.
Eric, what do you prefer? He's asking.
Or you want to do a second night or you want to just have a long day?
Well, if you're asking we, you better ask them because I'd rather just have it on Wednesday.
On the twenty-sixth.
But I don't know that I'm speaking for everybody.
Well, they don't have to. They don't have to be there other than that discombobulating. We can't make them come. Yeah, it is. It is no difference. I would say if you're going to do it on the twenty-first, we should move it up to like six o'clock because we're going to get out of there by five thirty and come over here and do it. But so I wouldn't wait till seven. That could, you know, I'd be just hanging out for a while. But I'm okay with making it May, you know, you're going to be here on the nineteenth for a work session. Then you're going to be here on the twenty-first for convocation. Then you're going to be here on the twenty-sixth. So you're coming three times. I just want to make sure that's what you're all okay with.
Sounds like president's choice.
Wednesday, the twenty-sixth is what it just gets crazy. There's so much to plan and do. And it's just like, I mean, I know, I mean, even I drive back, but it's just that night depending on everything else. It's just a lot to do.
Okay, so Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, seven P M. Take away the question mark. It's now been decided.
Okay.
And that'll make sure Riverside gets to come because he would have had to go to the graduation probably. So we would have lost a board member for that graduation. Okay.
So we move to item six, approval of the minutes, a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Thank you. Are there comments or questions on any of them? Roll call, please.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sundberger?
Yes.
And Brookhart?
Motion carries. Items seven, we need to go into executive session to discuss the compensation of an employee. And then we will come back out after the discussion. So a motion and a second? Duncan Dunham? Roll call, please.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sundberger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
And Buck?
Motion carries and the time. And then we would shut off the recording.
That's what I'm doing right now. I'm stopping to share that. And I am parting here. So recording is back on.
Okay, we're going to move to item number eight. Items for consideration as recommended by the treasurer, a motion and a second to bring items eight A through eight E to the floor for discussion and vote. Burrows and Buck? Did anybody else want a chance? Okay, when you're ready, Eric.
Sure. I thought I would just give you a quick follow up on one of my notes that I put in my packet this month. As of last Wednesday, we hadn't received any of our real estate settlements from any of our big four counties, which would be Harden, Champaign, Union, and Logan Counties. As of today, we've received all of our settlements from all of our counties except Union, okay? So where we sit, I had projected a three point six percent increase in real estate tax revenues this year. If Union County were to match this year what we received last school year, we would be standing at about a two point five percent increase over last year. I fully expect Union County to show an increase. I think the only reason that they wouldn't would be issues that are in Harden County that aren't in Union County anyway. So rather than being at two point five, I think we stand a much better chance of my three point six being low. So I think we're in line for a very good year, real estate tax wise. Think I'll find that out in the next week and you'll all find it out early in April. But I just wanted to bring that up since last week, it was a big old goose egg.
Eric, was it delayed because they switched the tax payment base?
I don't think so. You know, I and I I don't know. And I don't know what's going on in other organizations either. But I know I made my tax payment to Logan County in the first week of February. And I got the Logan County settlement late last week. I've just seen it over the course of time. I've seen this be a January, February type of event when all these monies come in to a migration to a February, March. And now it's solely a March thing. And I'm telling you this with a week to go in March. To me, it's just this, the time is stretching out and I know they have statutory limits. You know, they they have to settle on those monies. I just think for whatever reasons, we really seem to be moving towards the very latter end of this.
Why didn't they change it to theirs and even Clark, then theirs even out even further than that? I mean, theirs was just do the eleven or something, whatever the credit was. So I mean, it was a lot further out. So obviously you're having a lot of later payment.
Right. So anyhow, I guess that's something something I'll watch for the next couple of years and you can watch for the next twenty or so and see what happens. Outside of my report itself, let me get back in gear here. You got me talking. I lost my train of thought. Oh, oh, item eight C, this would be a temporary loan in advance from the general fund of seven thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars to one of our COVID relief related grants. This is just the Band-Aid for this month. I I think if we were to process more orders and this grant actually runs through this school year and through most of the next school year as well. I may I may have need to loan it some more money, but I only give other funds what they absolutely need from Uncle General Fund. So I may be coming back later in the school year there as well. Item eight D, we're asking for an increase in the overall appropriation level. None of these are related to the general fund. The first one, the six cent increase, I would just like to clear out the zero zero two fund, which was established really in trust for some of the premium bond proceeds we've received. We could use those to pay our our bond settlement fees, which we did. We could use them to pay for interest and principal payments, which we did. It just took a little bit longer than I anticipated to actually get that account closed out with Huntington Bank. Kept pulling a little bit of interest. And to me, six cents is no different than six thousand. It's a number we got to deal with. So I would I would like to clear that fund out with with this increase. The other two are safety school grants that we need to appropriate the money so that we can spend those. And then the final item on my list, item eight E, I've worked with Robert Walker on this. In two thousand seventeen, we purchased a very used nineteen ninety-eight Thomas bus for two thousand dollars. And basically, we bought this bus to transport the construction trade kids because they get new buses really dirty. So we buy older buses for them. This bus failed its inspection this year. We've gotten our two thousand dollars out of it. We pulled the power train from the bus. It will never be on the road again. I just need your permission to scrap the body. That would be the extent of mine unless there are any questions I can answer for people.
Eric, I have one question, and that is with the real estate tax projections type stuff, do you see the P I levy getting any more money because of growth of new construction in the Union County area of Marysville? Will we see anything in that area or not?
I do. What you've got to remember is that the P I levy is limited by the House Bill nine twenty tax reduction. Okay, the general fund gets all inflationary increases, okay? Everything up to two mils, there's no House Bill nine twenty reductions on. That's our two mil general fund levy. We added that point six mil P I levy, which means that we get new construction. That will be added to the tax bills. But when your house increases in value, the general fund will see an increase. The P I levy won't. So as the general fund increases this way, do not expect it to pull that P I levy along. It will increase at a slower pace, right?
P I only increases for new builds. But there's a lot of that in Union County right now.
It will. It just won't increase if the rate.
Sure, right.
If there's no further questions, we're going to go to roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage? I'm sorry. I'm just realizing people on the screen couldn't see my hand gestures, so. Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sundberger? Brookhart?
Buck?
Yes.
And Burrows?
Yep.
Motion carries. So for number nine, we'll take a motion and a second for.
Nine A through nine G with nine B being pulled.
So we've got we've got a nine G.
Well, those are the two addendums, the addendums that we have. These and then.
No, this is a different thing.
Right. So we have those two.
Oh, okay. I did read that late today.
So we have the two addendums. Like, if you haven't seen it, nine F is a resignation letter of Joyce Purloam, our attendance secretary. Nine G is the Something Corporation, Fire Truck Group has asked for property tax exemption. I believe it was ninety percent for fifteen years is what Urbana City Schools approved. So we're just approving what their school board approved for those two. So like I said, it's nine A through through G with B being pulled.
Campbell?
Dyer?
Thank you.
I don't know if, you know, that that I have anything different to report there. Or anybody have any questions on any of them? I think I put in the notes about those who are expanding sick leave, unpaid leave. This is under F M O A, which is their right due. The stipend nine D, as I said before, this is kind of extended school year. We're going to be doing this for some different camps, possibly for S T and A, possibly for COS to get them ready for their boards for students that might need extra academic support. We have an internship process going on that could possibly be selected by the state as one of the pilots to do summer internships. And we're looking at doing that in Marysville. And Tammy Cooper would be organizing that. So I would give her a stipend to run that internship program this summer type things. And so those are the ideas of where these stipends would take place for the extended school year. And correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, I think the stipends and different types of salary processes are going to come out of the general fund salary area right now. And then we have REIT money left that we'll use for supplies, grant, REIT grant will use for supplies and other things to support anything that we need to do in this area for the summer camp ideas. So that's all I had to report now, President. No one has any questions.
Roll call, please.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace? Paige, you still with us?
Paige, can you hear?
Yes, sorry.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
And Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, and then now we can deal with nine B?
Now you can deal with nine B, Madam President.
You know, and it might be um I'm I'm certainly all in for students traveling. But when I went to the Department of State, sometimes when I look at all, I try to look at the big picture. And what they say about Belize, and it's just been within these last thirty days, is to reconsider travel to Belize, the first one is to do to COVID. The second one was increased exert, I'm sorry, exercise increased caution in Belize due to crime, violent crimes such as sexual assault, home invasion, armed robberies, and murder are all common even during the daylight hours and in the tourist areas areas. A significant portion of the violent crime is gang related. And so when you look at the Department of State, it recommends that you don't travel there, and I know that this is a year away. And then the other thing, I don't know, have they already paid a deposit on this, does anybody know?
Terry, Craig, you guys want to talk about this at all?
Okay, and then of course, you know, there's all kinds of new rules with travel, the airlines, and your insurance, and you can buy insurance on certain things, but it's mostly being sick and then getting your money refunded that way. But one of the travel agencies that I talked to today also said they just don't know what the requirements are going to be, whether they're they're gonna be required to have the card with the COVID immunizations or not. And I guess I don't ever want to be responsible as a board member for the murder of one of our students. And so it just, it gave me pause this morning when I read that, because you know, I try to do my homework too, it's a great responsibility. Is it gonna, and I don't know, this isn't like a work-study project, it's for fun, right?
There's a correlation connection to it.
That's what I thought, because it, you know, that, you know, from what it was saying, so I, you know, I don't know um and and I don't know when we're going to know for sure, but because of all the civil unrest in that area, it's right there by Guatemala. And I I don't know, that's just what our own government is saying. Let alone, you know, just leave, even if you leave COVID out of it, the COVID might be in it because we don't know our new travel guidelines for the future. I don't know that they can make people get immunizations, I think that they would not do that, but if you want to travel and get on a plane in somebody's airline, they may do that. And so we just, I I don't know, it it bothered me that there was so much violence going on right now.
Terry, can you give any insight as to how this was selected? And once again, this is an ag type of thing, so how'd it come about, how they select Belize, that those type of ideas, I guess?
In January, I had a meeting um with all the ag teachers at Marysville. So this started from Cherry Anderson, one of the teachers at Marysville. She brought it to the Marysville High School um administration. And they said it was okay to move forward with planning. So then she opened it up to other teachers in the C T P P. And so Craig, Samantha Teeger, is my teacher at Riversdale, and then Ashley is our teacher at Marysville. So that's how it kind of came about for some of our students.
There are multiple ag programs at Marysville, we only operate one.
That is correct.
Correct.
What are they gonna be doing while they're there?
I'm sorry?
What will they be doing while they're there?
So listed in uh, I think it's, oh, the pages, um they have highlighted, I did, easily. I need it easier now. Um they're gonna do stream and watershed assessment, trapping turtles via radio signals. Uh we'll be with a local NGO on conservation and community development. Visiting a sustainable farm where ag practices are linked to reef health. Um climate smart farming practices, um a chocolate plantation where they'll see it go from bean to bar. Um reforestation, stabilizing river banks, water quality, um underwater transsept survey.
Cocoa bean make both chocolate and?
That's the ag community there.
And so, you know, by the attorney, we put this on for a couple of reasons. One is if enough 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 kids get to go and the teachers get some type of price break to do that, by ethics law, we have to give them that voucher or approve that voucher when it comes in for them to use it type of thing, because it's on the backs of the students, of the number of students who get get to go. This is, once again, totally voluntary, no student has to go to have a grade or any part of this trip. This is a a parent selection, willing to pay whatever the monthly fee is to collect those type of things to do that. And so once again, i- it would be somewhat, you know, we're not under liability coverage here necessarily. It's the liability of the traveling um company that's taking us on for flights and all those kind of liabilities, Madam President, is is falls under what the parents have signed an agreement with that traveling company. And so, but, once again, I don't disagree with the President that uh I don't know if selecting Belize is the safest place in the in the world to do this ag trip and 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 so I I'm not sure we want to endorse that as well, but uh that's how it all comes about.
Well, that that explains more of that, because you know, you're saying like we didn't have anything in it, and yet we were being asked, you know, to approve it, but that, I understand that, because usually that goes with any trip, you know, you get so many people and then you get a free trip.
Right.
So I get that.
And so we're, you know, we're proving, because once again, the teachers could be going, that might not be our spring break next week. I mean, that that week, I don't know, I don't know when that spring break is, you know, so it could be over and we could be having subs for three or four days for other parts or or things of that nature, while they take seven kids there and fifty kids are left back at the school in the ag program for classes, so there is some responsibility for us to cover some things, but as far as the trip and the risk and those type of things, that's really on the parent to decide if they want to send their kid into that kind of environment.
So we have in the resolution here that we reserve the right to withdraw that approval, determine it's dangerous.
Yep.
At what point, or how far in advance of this, does that decision, if we made that here? What's the point of no return, I guess, that's probably a bad analogy, but still.
August first is when they could back out and get a full refund for their money. If they go past August first, then they're locked in, but they can get a credit if they cancel up for forty-five days before then. So the trip's scheduled for early March, so if it, at the December board meeting, they wanted to be reevaluated, that will give them enough time to decide if we didn't want to let them, they would still be able to back out and get a credit that's good for up to the next two years, if they could use it for a few.
To take a different trip someplace else, right?
So our July meeting would be the last chance for no harm, no foul, and then.
And then December, December.
And that, does the company require you to buy that trip insurance?
It's part of the, the trip insurance is part of the package.
And that's like if the students get ill, like while they're there, they would be taken care of or by home. But like, I I'm understanding that a lot of places are covering nothing for COVID. If the student got sick there with COVID, I think they got, a lot of times, the trip insurance would freeze them.
It is specifically.
There's a whole separate website for this company that lists all of their, the COVID um questions to people.
It said that it would take care of the students, medical arrangements, trips home if they had to come home early, or if they were to be put up in quarantine. It does address those type of issues.
And then, are you writing in Belize? You know, even though, well, you know, because, well, if, there's things there that are really close to the water right there, I guess it's just.
They're mostly coastal.
And if, if the board meeting sends in a timely manner, then they can get their money back.
They can get their money back through August first.
We'd have to rescind by July.
After that, they get the credit for what they already, just on future trips.
Terry, what if we, if we pull this for now and get more research for Marysville? Why have they selected this, is this really based on the State Department? You know, is this really the best trip for them to choose? Is there another trip that would benefit ag in a safer part of the world or something like that? And if this is the only one, we could bring it back in April and have the discussion a little bit more, or if there's a different one, maybe Marysville also wants to take what our consideration of information from the State Department is, and maybe see if the company could give them a different offering. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, one year we had to cancel the trip to France for Belle Fountain. And um I think it was after nine eleven and all the different, you know, things in the countries went up, and so we rescinded our right, and we put that in our motion. But I'm telling you, parents jumped up and down on our desk, and it's like, what do you want to do? You know, it's like, I can't send, I'm not voting to send your child some place to bring him home in a casket.
Because parents aren't very happy when, even though they get the money as a credit, they might not want the credit, or their kid's going to college and they don't have the opportunity to go with the kids that they were gonna go with. I mean, it's not as simple as just getting the credit, I think we just need some more research, I think, to see if this is something really we want to go down.
And truly, I'm all for students traveling, but when I read that this morning, well, I read one, I wanted to go someplace yesterday, and my son read, you know, people are getting murdered there, he goes, I don't think that's where you really want to go, Mom. I mean, it's just that, you know, you do have to check and be diligent, and so I was
Yep.
And so I was just, you know, I did, it concerned me this morning when I read all that. And it and it's like, it's written within the last thirty days.
Okay, so we will not, if you're okay with that, Madam President, we will not vote on this tonight, we'll just pull it from the agenda this time and reevaluate.
Yes, I'd be glad to do that.
Okay.
All right.
You're now on to ten.
Yes. Do we, we have ten G added there, correct?
We do, but these will all be individually voted on motions.
It'll be reordered. Okay, so a motion in a second to bring the items under item ten to the board for vote and discussion.
Love, love, Mo, Mauser? Okay. Second. I'll talk on on this one, Madam President, first, uh, once again, uh, I'm doing a project, uh, talk, I I always ask people who are experts, and I ask my construction teacher some ideas on this project, and he says, well, we have two drywall lists, why don't you use one of those? And we do have forms where we allow teachers to take out equipment or different types of stuff. And I sign those forms uh when they're appropriate, or uh John K signs them if it's a technology-related type of piece of equipment. Uh I don't feel right signing my own form, um, you know, so I want the board to, if they're willing to let me do this. I think I said in my notes, I'd rather give a donation to the C T S O than rent it, you know, someplace else. And this would also give me a little bit to do two hours a night, kind of slower in the process of then trying to find enough help to help me knock it out on a weekend.
If we approve this, do we have to help you in any way?
You don't have to, you don't have to help me, but I could set up a time and date if you want to come by for a couple hours when I'm doing it, but uh.
I need Sanders.
But yeah, so, so no, I'm bringing somebody in to do that part, I just want to hang it, I just want to lift it and hang it and that kind of thing, so. And he said, he said they're both over twenty years old, and it'd be nice if somebody glued them and used them more often, so that was his comment as a teacher, so that's why I'm making the request.
Okay, so then we have um ten C is.
You have to vote on that, you have to roll call vote ten A.
Oh, my gosh, losing my mind tonight, okay, um, roll call, please.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Mauser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yeah.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
And Dunham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten is the resignation of our treasurer for the purpose of retirement effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. A motion in a second? Brookhart? Questions or comments? It's been a long, long, nice relationship. He said today, I don't have to worry about something, because I, you know, I am resigning, I said, there's two more years on your contract to work, I said. So he was more than happy, no?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Really?
I'm sure we'll all forget about it by the time it actually rolls around.
Probably not.
Well, I I said last month it would be really kind of a cruel joke for me to set my resignation at the twenty-third and then you not extend my contract. I guess I'm putting that to the test. But yes.
Hey, you set this up. All right, so we'll do that, and then we're gonna hopefully review his contract, right? Roll call, please.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Mauser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
It's up to you, Dyer?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries. Okay, item ten C is employment of the treasurer. So we will extend his contract for eleven months further than his current contract, and it would go from August the first of twenty-two to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three under the terms and the conditions of the contract, a motion in a second? Buck?
And? McConnell?
Questions? Roll call, please.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yeah.
Mauser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell? Dyer?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Motion carries. All right. David, you always add some excitement to the meeting. Um, item ten D, I, yes, rescind employment contract for Caleb Lang effective May twenty-second, two thousand, oh, it was two thousand and nineteen was the contract to August first. To August first in nineteen, that's not right. Isn't it August first?
We gave him the contract in May that began in August of twenty nineteen, where we're sending that contract and replacing it with ten E.
Gotcha.
And, oh, it's not there, but I'll need a motion in a second.
So moved.
You got McConnell, you got McConnell and Dunham. McConnell was first, Dunham was second.
Are there any questions or comments about that? It's the way that we needed to do it in order to put the next contract in place. Roll call, please.
McMahill?
Yes.
Mauser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
And McConnell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten E, employment of the assistant treasurer. A motion in a second to appoint the assistant treasurer of Ohio High Point G V S D of Caleb Lang, August first of twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Buck and Dunham, or did you say?
Buck and Dunham this time?
I thought, I heard somebody on the right-hand side, but I don't. Okay, so we satisfied with motion in a second? Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mauser?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And McMahon?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10F, employment of the treasurer. So once Caleb has his treasurer's license and he moves into that position, we have this motion for that contract for Caleb to be the treasurer of the Ohio High Point JBSD effective July 1, 2023 through July 31 of 2025, under the terms and conditions of the contract. Anybody have questions? So a motion in a second? We have a motion in a second. And I'm telling you, the new attorney, it took me four times to get July 31st, 2025 right in this contract. I was just over it.
So now I know who printed the placemats for supper.
No, that's my mistake. That's my mistake.
That was pretty good, I'd say. All right, so. Yes. Well, then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. No, I mean, really, he's, he's.
Crossing that bridge for five years almost.
Four years. And so while he's in school now getting his certification, he would move to that position in August of this year to be the assistant. And then this contract just allows for him to have, if, if, let's say he stayed here as the supervisor and all was well. He would have continuity in that job. So he's also, he's all signed up for all the different classes. He's a member of OASBO right now. And then he has classes that he's taking this summer also in order to complete that certification. And so a lot of the classes at OASBO suffices that. You can either do those or the 300 hours. And we're doing both so that he can learn that position. So if it didn't work out, he would come to us and tell us. And then I don't know what we would do. I have every confidence it's going to work out.
I would never have asked Caleb if he was interested if I didn't think he could be highly successful. I wouldn't have asked Caleb, but I thought maybe he could get it done. But I have 100% confidence that Caleb Lang will be a very good treasurer here. But I'm going to tell you the most important part of the deal for this school district. I probably have a very low opinion of basically the atmosphere of treasurers and superintendents at the state. I think Ohio High Point could very easily become just another stepping stone for somebody looking for the very next job. And we've got Caleb Lang, a guy who is already committed to the district. He's committed to this community. Caleb Lang is part of the fabric of this school already. And I, I think if you're going to take a chance, this is the chance I would take rather than hiring somebody that's already looking for the next job once they get this one. I, I think there are risks either way. I would take this risk every single day.
And I, and I would, and I would back up that on the other part of it too, is I think you look at people's track record and their history. And Caleb has been promoted within this district from being a teacher to being a supervisor. He's always got his next contract. He's one of the hardest working administrators in the district. And so I just think his past performance and track record is the type of individual who won't fail you in this position. And like I said, I don't think Ms. Dragerberg would select him if he thought that had any chance. But Caleb has demonstrated in the past, his knowledge of detail, his understanding of numbers, his understanding of working with other district budgets and things of that nature. So he has a grasp of things before he starts this job. And I just don't think you could find a better character individual to take on the next role here for High Point.
If we hire somebody from the outside, we're going to give them a contract with, based on some interviews. And they're going to have a contract that is more than the first day that we hire them.
Right.
So there's a risk there as well. Caleb, we know what we're getting at.
And, and I can see, maybe being a new board member to this board, you have questions? Because we, well, I have, this is my 16th or 17th year, so I have history. And if I didn't think that, you know, then I would probably say otherwise. But, you know, generally, and I, and I told all of you, you know, that generally a board, you know, hires the new person. But because Caleb, what's the grant? The Pell?
Oh, the Perkins Grant.
The Perkins. I always wanted to call Pell. He, he has always worked with Eric in that he, Caleb was responsible for that big Perkins grant. And he always ran it well and managed it well and all that. And I think with also him and Eric working together, Aaron saw, Aaron, that's my son, you're Eric. Eric saw that in Caleb. And I think he thought, you know, that, that it would be just good to ask. He asked him those questions personally. And then when Matt and I had a meeting with Eric in December, that's when he bought it up and it was just like, it's the first we heard of it, but we also liked it. So, I mean, you know.
I'm not sure I understand.
Seriously, I'm not sure I understand. Oh, it's too much.
It goes really bad, Caleb. They're pouring a lot of concrete around here over the next couple of years.
So it does, I mean, does that help? I mean, I, we don't want to drown you in everything, but.
No, that's why, I, I think my job is to ask your questions.
I agree.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I, how many of you know of a transition like this anywhere else? I, I think it's completely out of the box thinking. But I, I, I just can't imagine a better opportunity for this school or for a guy who's midway through his career, start a brand-new job and not have to change his commute to work.
Well, and then, and really working with him as the board president to see how we were going to, you know, formulate his contract. He's always been, you know, very professional, very thoughtful, asking good questions. It, it has been hard going back and forth with this attorney, trying to get the contract right. And the poor guy, it's like, but he, and she didn't put in the right date. And he, she didn't, you know? And she couldn't. Until today at 4 o'clock, we got her. And so, but I think it came, I, you know, he, I think he loves what he does here currently, but he's very excited about this new adventure too. And he would like to, you know, for someone to say that they want to finish their contract here, you know, the years till retirement, speaks well for Ohio High Point too. And I told him, I said, well, this board can only do so much for you. And then, you know, with working with the board and all of that, we'll see that. But I'm, I'm sure it would work out fine. I, I don't think we would have all ventured down that road.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for the question. It's always good. So. Roll call, please.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford? Wallace?
Yes.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
And Mauser?
Mauser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam President, you have 9G to be read by Mr. Buck. 10G, I mean, 10G.
I'm sorry, did, did they say something?
Did you have a question, Larry?
Okay, we have item. Well.
10G now.
Well, that's executive session on here, so.
We're scratching out executive session now.
And we're going to do that, okay, because you said you were going to reorder them. So 10G is what I can say then.
Right.
A motion in a second to bring items 10G to the floor for consideration and vote?
McConnell?
Thank you. So we're going to read the resolution so that you can all hear it. So Chuck?
I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the sick leave bank credit current employees with past contributions on a, a last-in, first-out basis contingent on 220 days sick leave rule limit.
Okay. If there's no questions, roll call, please.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Dunburger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?